We'll call our joint meeting of January 25th, 2021 to order. If everyone will please rise and will face to the American flag to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill Osburn will now lead us in the invocation.
Let's pray. Our Father, we come to you with a humble heart tonight, Lord, and a thankful heart, the privilege of just being here in your presence today, Lord. We pray that you'll watch over us and guide us, give us strength throughout our meeting, keep us on the right path, Lord, for unity and where everybody working together for a good common cause, Lord, for proceeding, helping our county and town to grow and move on down the road to success, Lord. We thank you for everything we give thee all praise and all the glory, Lord, for these blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
So on behalf of the Sparta Town Council, I'll call the Town Council into order. And Bill, if you want to do the County Commissioners, bring them into order, please.
We'll call the County Commissioners' joint meeting, the Town and Sparta Town Councils in order.
If everyone has got an agenda that was provided by Drew to look over and everything, if there's anything that anyone would like to add to the agenda, now would be a great time to do it. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it is.
Remove.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion, show of hands amongst everyone that is approval of the agenda. And that goes for the county and so everybody's good. All right.
Wes, did we have a copy of the agenda someplace?
You have another copy of it anywhere?
Make that two.
Okay.
Pass this on now. I heard some right there.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ryan, if you want to give more.
I got one.
The only thing I want to do before we get into our general business is to clear up a couple matters right off the bat and offer an apology to Commissioner Luthman. It was reported in the paper that I may have singled you out in a meeting, which you were there, I was there. I hope that you did not feel that way, therefore you have my apology if that come across wrong. There was not nowhere intention of that. Number two is the Allegheny News or whoever is reporting on our meetings, you gotta get the information right. The Town of Sparta nor the County of Allegheny has anything to do with the Earthquake Relief Fund. Ryan Wilmuth doesn't have anything to do with it. I don't have anything to do with it other than setting it up. That was it. The quote that was in there from Ryan sounds like the Town is writing checks for the earthquake relief, which it is not. That is an independent organization that has a member from the county, Bill Osburn, and a member from the Town, Cole Edwards, along with three other volunteers on that board, to oversee and overlook earthquake donations to victims that were affected. It covers everything except construction cost. So if you'll make that right, Zach, in the next edition, I surely would appreciate that. That way Ryan doesn't get bombarded with calls asking for money. We'll go right into general business. And our first thing is law enforcement challenges for handling the mental health and drug-related IVCs at Allegheny Health. And I'll open the floor up to anybody that wants to start the discussion, and you just jump right in. So anybody that wants to jump in and start the discussion on this, this is something that we have had going on for a long period of time, and we just need to get some things ironed out, I believe. Ryan, you want to go ahead and start off with what you have, or?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Mr. Carter, would you like to start off with something along those lines?
I believe the item was asked to be placed on the agenda by Commissioner Evans, so I would defer to him. He was the one requesting the matter.
Yes, I did request that. I know it's a bear for, and it's an issue, and it's an ongoing issue, and I think it's been an ever-increasing challenge for both the Town and the County. And the Vaya Health is a key partner in this, or should be, and we kind of structured some meetings with the County and with our providers in the County and with Vaya a couple of years ago as some changes were taking place within the mental health within the state. And I know Vaya, I think, had implemented some things, had, I think, had worked with our local Sheriff's Department. And I was just curious, and I know that the Town, I think, talked with Bob, the challenge is you end up with a lot of man-hours sitting with folks, or that's been the case in the past. And I had not had any conversation with anybody, and I was just curious what the current environment was. Has things improved since Vaya came in and met with y'all? Is it a challenge? And then, of course, it seems as though, you know, with the County and the Town, you know, you got your challenges between you, depending on where the residents may be as to who handles it. And that's all, just really curious. I am, I've been on the Vaya, the main health board, executive board with Vaya for a year, and I wanted to share some feedback with Vaya in this regard, in this manner, to see what things are like on the ground at this point.
And I'm not sure if the general public understands about involuntary commitment or not, but when someone is involuntarily committed to our hospital, they have to have 24/7 security until they're either placed at another facility, or they could stay up at our hospital sometimes for more than a month. And that takes a law enforcement officer out of their job to stay over there, and it uses up a lot of county and town funds. So just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. And also, and this is in no way, you know, looking down at our law enforcement or anything, it's just basically what is, what are the challenges, and is there anything we could pass along or work together with? And I don't, I've never really known the full extent and the challenges within the Town, but I know it's a bear for both of you, and I just was wondering if you could, anybody could share any feedback. And I know we've got a couple of representatives here who I would ask if it's okay whenever it's appropriate.
I think Commissioner Irwin wants to say something, I guess.
I've spoken with the Department of Social Services on this matter also. I'm the County Representative from the Commissioners on the Vaya Board. And one of the problems that we are running into is also with the pandemic and the things that, those challenges that have come up. Right now, if there are mental health issues, it brings a number of things in. With the pandemic, they are doing what is known as a mobile crisis team. Unfortunately, the mobile crisis team only does phone calls. So if you have someone that says that they're suicidal, you don't have a person that is sitting there to look at their body language. It is over a phone. That is one of the challenges. And law enforcement, I've spoken with Nick, we've discussed this on occasion in the past, and a few of the other officers involved. It is true, whenever someone shows up and they've either attempted suicide, or they are contemplating suicide, or they are saying that they are going to hurt them, someone has got to be with them 24/7. The other problem that we've got is a state problem. And I'm going to give you my personal experience from my daughter, who was born brain damaged and was in the mental health system in North Carolina for over 25 years. And she died in the mental health system. There are simply not enough facilities available for mental health in the state of North Carolina. And there's a number of shortages. You have the mental health, the mental problems that are out there, and then you get into substance abuse, alcohol and drugs. We do not have a facilities, we do not have the trained staff, and we have closed down facilities. We had one in Raleigh, and we closed it down. Speaking from the families, it is, it takes a terrible toll on you. You've got a loved one that you know needs the mental health facilities, the things that are available, and you cannot find them. So you end up with them as the family. Or they end up at a hospital emergency room with a deputy standing right there beside them to make sure that they are taken care of. And then you add on top of that, they have rights. Believe it or not, they have rights. They are not mentally capable of taking care of their daily functions or their bodily functions, but at the same time, if they want to go out and they want to have a beer, they can have a beer. If they want a boyfriend and have a physical get-together, they have the right to do that, believe it or not. So this is something that is affecting us because whenever the Police Department or the Sheriff Department has to put a deputy over there, that's one off the road. That means another one is going to have to come in to fill, that's overtime. But it's unfortunately, I wish to God that the County could do something about it, but it's an area that there are so many outside strings that are pulling on Vaya. They're doing, they're doing a good job with what they can at this time, but the state resources, to be quite frank with you, and this is from my experience, is woefully lacking. Nick, am I right or am I wrong? You need to get up and tell us, Stud.
Come right up here, come right up here to Ryan's mic and turn it around right there at that seat. And then we'll ask Chief Lane to his thoughts on this too, if he wants to chime in. But let me ask this right here to the County. Is there any way that we can get the hospital and the newly revised edition of the hospital involved with this with hiring security guards, like every other hospital that has security guards to watch folks?
Wes, Mayor, I served on the Vaya Board for about five years up until recently, and then John took over. But during that time, there was discussion with the County Commissioners and the hospital Board about them sharing in the cost of providing some type of security. With the new administration taking over, I don't know if that's been addressed or not, but at one time, the hospital was willing to pay some of the amount of money. Now, I think one thing that people need to understand is when someone is committed, either self-committed or committed by someone at the hospital, not just in drugs, they're looking for a bed someplace in the state of North Carolina, but if that individual has other problems, physical problems, mental problems, something that has to be dealt with if they're wheelchair-bound, there's a lot of different aspects to look at when they're looking for a bed. It's just not picking up a phone and calling one of these hospitals. There's a whole list that they go through to see if this person is aggressive, if this person has diabetes, is this person on a machine to change her blood? There's a lot of, lot of different things that they have to look at. But it's a financial burden, and it's a mental burden on the people of Allegheny, especially the Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and the people at the hospital. It wasn't long ago, they had an individual at the hospital, it took six people to restrain that person and hold them on, hold them on the bed. So it's, when you get on some of these drugs, it's very hard, very hard to control these people. That's all.
Officer Hawks, your thoughts, please.
Sorry, I hadn't had a lot of time to prepare today. I've been busy with some other things. Can y'all hear me?
No.
You're gonna have to pull it right up in there.
Thank you.
How about now? Hello?
Yeah, boy.
You got me?
The air winds are deaf, remember that.
Okay. So there's a lot of different aspects to involuntary commitments. And like what the Mayor said, and me and Cole was just talking about, I think that's a great idea as far as the security at the hospital. That certainly would relieve a lot of responsibilities from us and from Chief Lane. The statute itself is very vague, and it does not cover the time from once you pick up a respondent till the time of transportation either back to the house or to a 24-hour facility. And if we got just a second, I will read that. I'm not going to read the entire statute, but I'm going to read what actually we are responsible for doing. So in 122(c)(251), Transportation of Involuntary Commitments, subsection A says, "Except as provided in subsections F and G, transportation of a respondent within a county under the involuntary commitment proceedings of this article, including admission and discharge, shall be provided by the city or the county." City has the responsibility to provide transportation of a resident who resides in the city or who is taken into custody in the city. The County has the duty to provide transportation of a respondent who resides in the county or is taken into custody in the county. All right. Transportation, so when you read that, it says, "Except as provided in subsections F and G, transportation between counties under the involuntary commitment proceedings of this article for admission to a 24-hour facility shall be provided by the county." So the statute says that we shall pick them up and take them to the first designation, which in our case is AMH. And then, once they have been deemed either committable or not committable, we're to pick them back up again. It doesn't necessarily say that we have to sit with this person the entire time that they are at the hospital. We do that as a courtesy because of the safety issues that's involved. So I think that, like Ash County has their own Police Department at the hospital, I know that Hugh Chatham has security folks. So by statute, that would be perfectly fine to be able, for a hospital to provide their own security. That certainly would work. These commitments are very time-consuming for all of us. And just as what John said earlier, they've shut down facilities. I can remember when I first started doing this, which has been a pretty good while ago, and me and Cole was just talking about it, I can remember when a three or four-day stay at Allegheny was a long time. They got them in, they got them out, you know, two, three, four days. Now, you know, it's two weeks, month before they find placement, and it's simply because they shut down these facilities statewide. So the transportation to and the transportation from is not so huge anymore, you know, lots of times we can drive across the state. But now, the biggest problem is the 24-hour day, seven-day a week sitting at our local facility for them to find placement.
But if you didn't provide that security service, what would the hospital do?
Well...
They may refuse to accept them. I don't think that they can deny an emergency admittance, but there's going to be a problem if you just drop them off and leave. They haven't got to, they don't have the manpower to watch them.
Yeah, you're correct. And then you would run into the issues of them leaving, and then you having to go pick them back up, or someone could get hurt. So the liability is there, that's the reason why we see it.
Right.
Gentlemen, ladies, would it be a good idea for us to make a joint resolution requesting that Allegheny Health look into this, because it's obviously a problem that we're both dealing with, and we're here together today? So my thought would be, ask Allegheny Health to look into providing their own security. I don't see that there's any other way forward.
My question would be too, as someone who sits on the board, if I understand correctly, Daymark is the Mobile Crisis Unit. And my wife, she works in the mental health field, she is a care coordinator, and so she deals with these on a daily basis. Same thing, can't find placements for them, but with her company, her supervisor is following up with her 48 hours later after this person has showed up to the hospital. What have you done? What are you doing? Who have you, what homes have you reached out to? What hospitals have you reached out to? And now my wife is looking across the country. Just the other day, she placed somebody out of state, and they've never had to do that before, but now they're having to do it more often. And so I would wonder if, whether it's Brian Ingram or whoever you need to speak with at Vaya, what are they doing as far as follow-ups with the Mobile Crisis Unit? After 48 hours of admittance, are they looking for placements, you know, 24 hours a day? Is somebody, is somebody doing that?
Chief Lane, do you have anything you'd like to add on that also, since you deal with this quite a bit? And the reason that it concerns me as far as the Mayor and the Town is that we have a limited staff here at the Town of Sparta Police. We have very limited staff. We take an officer off the street to go set on a commitment that takes our man off the street, when can't do his duties. So lo and behold, if we have a crime committed in Sparta, yes, we have the County Sheriff's deputies around, but that's in our, that's in our neck of the woods there, and we need that man right there. He's supposed to be there and quick. So I'll turn it over to Chief Lane for his thoughts.
Well, I agree with John on the Vaya Health. I think they should come and to the hospital and assess them every day. I sat on a commitment for three weeks over Christmas, 15-year-old boy. He never gave us a minute problem. He was not a commitment-type person. So he was, it took three weeks to get him placed. I think if Vaya had to come over there, they would say, "This person needs outpatient treatment," because they can look at them and talk to them, and, you know, it's hard to get a person's feelings talking to them over phone. And now, as far as setting on the commitments, I went to a symposium that Mark Bots put on that he helped write the law for the commitment process, and he addressed rural counties. He said that the law specifically states that you have to leave them in responsible care. And he said, "For you rural counties, you rural officers, a doctor and two nurses is not responsible care." So we're the only hospital I know around that doesn't have security. And I feel like it should be on the hospital to provide some type of security, even if they provide it part-time, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. It would give us a break from the Police Department, it'd give a break from the Sheriff's Department to have to sit on these commitments. And it's a reassessment thing. I go over there on most of our commitments, and I assess whether we need to sit on it or not, because sometimes you've got a 13-year-old girl that's just wanting attention, and they don't really cause a problem. And a lot of times, a doctor will look at me and say, "I don't think you need to sit on them." So, and that's where we stand on that. It's a reassessment, because if something happens to them, it ultimately falls back on the Town or the County.
That certainly speaks to what I just said.
Bob, in that situation, the risk assessment, I mean, who ultimately has the say-so? Like if you take somebody over there and you said, in that case, like the doctor said, "I don't think it would be really necessary to sit on them."
When he says that to me, he is assuming the risk. Unless he says that to me, then I'll make my own assessment of whether I need to have an officer there 24/7. A lot of times, if we're so close by, I'll just say, "Call us if you need us," because I've assessed them, and I don't see them causing any problem. But that's few and far between, but sometimes we do have it.
I would agree with Councilwoman Richardson. I think the hospital and Vaya Health and Daymark as a provider through, for Vaya Health, would be good for them to know what our challenges are and see what they could offer, and then try to plead for some security within the hospital.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just to reaffirm what Commissioner Evans and Councilwoman Richardson said, General Stat, or Session Law 2018-33 actually put in motion that these mental health organizations, city, counties, hospitals have to have a transportation plan. Now, I can't find that we adopted that here locally. I assume we did in 2019. But that does put some onus back on these agencies that they have to help us. We don't bear, or bear that load alone. So it's not we're asking them to do something that is unreasonable. We need to look at that transportation plan, and that is our leverage to get that cooperation.
So, Mr. Mayor, do we, do we need to agree to pass a joint resolution, or shall we just go back to our respective boards and pass individual resolutions?
I would recommend that we pull that transportation plan if it's in existence, and then I do think a joint resolution in a direction that we want to push that conversation should be passed.
I don't believe what we're facing right now is a transportation problem. I believe what we're facing right now is a security problem, and it is going to get worse. The longer we stay locked down, the more problems that we are going to have.
Well, and I think that's what we're speaking to, is that we need help taking care of these folks once they get to the hospital before they go somewhere else. So we can review the transportation's good, but we need some assistance from Vaya and the hospital on taking care of these folks once they're there, correct?
And to your point, Mr. Irwin, the general statute that actually talks about transportation, from what I can gather, uses custody and transportation ambiguously.
Right. But locally, the Sheriff's Department, Police Department have assumed the responsibility for the security over there. That's where it's really hurting the county right now. We're pulling officers off the street. And if we have to bring people in to cover them, that's overtime. So that's affecting us on the security. The transportation, we've got to remember, transportation doesn't come into question until we've got somewhere to take these people. And if we're sitting there for three weeks, as Chief Lane just said, he babysat a 15-year-old for three weeks. Now, that means 24/7. Am I not correct, Chief? Now, look at how much manpower was tied up right there. The state needs to become aware of this. I speak as a parent that lost a child in that system. I speak as a dad gone commissioner. Our mental health system is just about third world, whenever you started getting into the process, and you get into the weeds like I have. So we can, we can discuss local matters, but it also touches on state matters.
Chairman, Bill Osburn has something.
I also think it'd be, the time is right to have a conversation with the hospital about them getting in the game of providing some of the security over there.
I don't think it's, I don't think we need a formal resolution, but I do think that united front between the County and Town Managers with a meeting with the hospital, explain the situation that we've got, and see if we can come with a, hopefully, a plan to solve our problems. And if they aren't responsive to that, then a joint resolution, I believe, would certainly be called for. Let's make it formal. Let's make it formal.
It could at least, like Chief Lane says, if we can't get five days a week full, at least we can get part-time, it's going to help out some.
I would make the recommendation... I would make the recommendation that, I don't know when our next joint meeting is supposed to be, but I'm assuming it's the fifth Monday, whenever that falls.
Be last Monday in March.
Okay, in March. That between now and then, that the town manager and county manager, maybe the mayor and chairman of the commissioners, get together with these people and see what can be worked out, bring back to us some kind of recommendation that we can pass a joint resolution to implement whatever it is they come up with. So that we speak as a whole body, not just one separate and one separate, and that we give them the responsibility to meet with those people, come back with some kind of recommendation at our next joint meeting.
I would agree with that wholeheartedly.
Mr. Carter, you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Bill, you okay?
Good with it.
Ryan, you okay?
Certainly.
And I'm okay with that, so we'll make that a joint effort right there, so we'll get that started, and let's see if we can get some stuff going there with the mental health. Item number two in our general business is a streetscape, kind of like a final update here, I guess you could say, with Ryan. Go ahead, Ryan, if you will.
Certainly. So I'm actually probably the latest person to the game on this project, but Brian and I did share that transition, and I want to thank him for assisting me through, through the remainder of this project. The notice to proceed, as you all remember, was received September of 2019 with a $5.1 million budget. It's been a couple months since you've probably seen any construction taking place. When all said and done, we actually expended 98.6% of that $5.1 million budget, which left us $71,686 of grant funding remaining. So the way that project worked, the loan dollars were expended first, and then the grant dollars have, have expended last. So turning those funds back over yielded no benefit or reduction in price to the overall project. So we started looking to maximize the remaining dollars that we had. We identified, obviously, that some fixtures for the main street area was a priority. We also identified that the Evergreen parking lot owned by the town that's located at 18 and Evergreen Street was in, in need of repair, also to provide more parking that, that was eliminated by some of the redesign. So we received bids from the, the contractor on that project, and that came back at $57,075. Now, that should yield about an additional 40 parking spaces just adjacent to downtown. With the remaining funds, we're going to procure benches and trashcans, and we estimate that the, with the remaining grant funds, we can get six benches and six, six trashcans. In addition to our money, the SRC did a fundraising campaign, and they have some money to contribute to additional benches, trashcans, planners, or the pedestrian light pole fixtures. Once we establish the number of benches needed, trashcans, if, if what we have is sufficient, the SRC will then look at the other items. But we do collectively have almost $12,000 remaining after the parking lot's paved, four benches and trashcans, and then SRC will, will fill in some remaining gaps. So in totality, that will take the $71,000 roughly remaining, and there'll be no dollars left in the project. Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from anybody on the, on the county about streetscape or anything that's going on with that?
Looks good.
Looks good.
Looks good.
There it is, and that's what we've got. Item number three is recycling and cardboard issues. And so I'm just going to let the county manager go ahead and you lead this discussion, and tell us where you all are at and what we need, and what we need to know.
Absolutely. I know there's, there's been a lot of discussion over the last six to eight months about, about the county's ability or current inability to receive and process recyclable materials. And there's been several discussions. I've, I've invited David Spicer here today with us. He is the county's new public works director. David has been working very hard on helping to find solutions to this. So as an update to both bodies, I would ask that we allow David to, to find a microphone somewhere so that he can provide a, a more detailed update to both bodies at this point.
No problem. Just talk into that thing, David, like it's, you know, you're kissing your wife right there, just talk right into it there.
Yeah, that's a little too personal, I think. Thank you for the invitation. We, as a county, have certainly, as we have had the inability to do a full recycling program, we're still recycling. We've still got metal, white goods, tires, oil, oil filters, all those things are still in place. It's the smaller items and household items that we have been faced with. So I have been in the process of writing a grant. The grant will include a three-yard compactor and two 40-yard roll-off containers. So we will be able to hopefully get this grant and be able to purchase this equipment and have it installed at our facility, at the transfer facility there, and be able to process with a co-mingle. It'll be a co-mingle, so cans, bottles, newspapers, cracker boxes, cereal boxes, all those things will go into the same hopper. All those will go into the same container and will be hauled from our facility to another facility to be separated. So hopefully, we will be able to get that grant. That grant, a final date on that is February the 15th. So I've got it ready. I just got to submit it, so we're ready to go. Still checking on a few other odd nins as far as transportation for recyclables. As far as the cardboard, we did implement a charge for the cardboard at this time, and that's on a temporary basis until we can do better. It was costing the county to transport that offsite, so with that, we had to implement that, but we are working very diligently in the process of being able to take corrugated cardboard, bail it, and send it to another facility. So that's upcoming. We're, we're working hard on that one. So as far as the recyclables, there, there's still a few things that we have to work out on that, but we're working very hard in trying to obtain that. And of course, as always, if you have any questions, certainly I'll entertain any questions that you might have, any concerns.
The cardboard, how does that, who is that affecting most? Is that, I mean, for instance, I'm concerned here in town, our businesses use a lot of cardboard, and rightfully so. Is it just going to be those people that bring strictly cardboard there that's going to get this fee, or is it homeowners, or, or how is it?
Yes, it's, it's on the commercial side. All their, all of our folks in town and, and out in the county with the solid waste, they're allowed, they, they, they bring theirs in, and, and we're not charging them any extra for their cardboard. It does, it does, well, the, the people who are the biggest generators of cardboard is the businesses, and that's, that's not, right now, it's a very small amount. So it's not a, that bigger deal as it is between the dates of, first of October till like the middle of December. Between those dates, we have, we're, we're just overwhelmed with cardboard. And when we put cardboard on our trailers, our trailers is, is, the loads are lighter, and we still have to pay per ton to have that disposed of. But that's just affecting the commercial users right now. Being that said, hopefully, in the near future, and, and prices is being gathered right now to overhaul our baler and see if we can't work out some way of taking the recyclable cardboard, the corrugated cardboard, bail it, put it in a trailer, and send it to another facility for recycling.
Do you have any kind of timeline on that?
Well, as far as the, the co-mingle with the compactor, if we get the grant, we cannot spend the money until after July 1. So I've, I've set a timeline from July 1 to the first of September to have that thing in place. It's about a eight-week lead time on the compactor and getting that here, and the price that I have to put in for the grant is completely turnkey installed. We, we'll run the electricity to it, and then they'll take it from our disconnect and, and go from there. We'll have a cement pad poured, it'll, it'll, it'll look nice when we get it completed, and it'll be very safe for the public to use. So hopefully, by September, hopefully, we will have, if that's providing we get the grant. You know, it's going, it's going to cost about $40,000, and the grant is for 30. So it's still going to cost the county a little bit of money to, to do this. So we, we've still got to go through the process of having this approved, but that, that's the timeline that we're looking at. And in that process, then, I, I, I still have a little bit left in the budget for facility updates and facility improvements. So I'm looking at pricing on getting the baler, and it, it needs a new belt, there's some leaks, hydraulic leaks on it, there's just some things that needs to be done to it. So we're trying to get that looked at right now. So hopefully, by September, I'm hoping we'll have it all going.
Now, the size of this co-mingle baler is what?
Uh, the, the compactor is a three-yard hopper. It will be an automatic hopper, so that when, if, if you and I go and we put our recycles in there, once it gets up to a certain level, there's an eye there that tells it it's this full enough, and then it automatically cycles itself. Now, the 40-yard container that it's pushed into, we're looking at probably having about seven to eight tons of, of recycled material in that dumpster, in that roll-off container itself. So we're looking at, right now, just a, a guess, and it, it could be more, it could be less, but we're looking at one a week. So we're looking at between seven and eight tons a week of reduction in waste that goes to the landfill.
I'm more interested in the cardboard. Seems to me like some of these places, like some of the grocery stores, they have the small compactors, like what you're talking about for this. Would it not be more sense to get one of those to do the cardboard in?
I, I went to those people. There was two locations that, that had been identified, and neither one of them would be able to process the amount of cardboard that we have.
I'm not talking about them doing it, I'm talking about the county, town, whatever, getting a compactor just for cardboard that would be smaller.
The baler that we have is already in place. It's just, it's in disrepair.
I know that, and I also know it's not in very good shape.
Yeah, correct.
And it's not very efficient.
That's probably true, too. I've never run it, so I cannot speak to that.
My brother has, and he can tell.
Yeah.
I certainly appreciate all your efforts.
Reason, the reason that I'm concerned right now is that we have a contract with Roger Brady, who picks up carpet, cardboard on a certain day, and when he brings it over there, that fee's going to affect him, right?
Yes.
So at, we just have negotiated a new deal with him on our garbage fees and stuff and so on and so forth like that. So he's picking up gar, uh, cardboard that people are still throwing out to recycle, and unfortunately, that's cutting into his profits.
Yes.
Now, if he quits picking up cardboard, we're hurting in the town, because that means we're going to have stuff stacked up outside buildings like crazy.
Certainly.
Because they don't want to pay that $75 fee, I believe it is, right?
Seventy-five per ton.
Per ton. I don't know how many tons Roger hauls in there a week or that day. Do you have any estimate on that? Do you know that, David, or anything?
I, I think he brings us one load, and he, on his truck, it's, it's between four and five tons, I think, usually, a week. That's just a...
So he's paying, he's paying roughly 300 bucks?
Roughly.
Roughly 300 bucks every time he hauls a load of cardboard?
That's a week?
Yeah, give or take. Yeah, give or take.
Yeah, I mean, there are certain days he's going to have more, and certain days he's going to have less.
Yeah, but he, he, his comes in, I think, on Thursdays.
Okay.
And, you know, we, we do accordingly to that. But the thing that we have to keep in mind is that every ton that comes in right now, the county's paying $56 a ton to get rid of it. So for us to take it for free and then still pay $56 a ton to dispose of that, the county's losing money every ton that we put in that trailer. So that's an incentive for us to get our baler up going and make sure that, that we are able to, and, and a compactor may be the answer, a second compactor may be the answer. Unfortunately, for the amount of grant money that we're, we've been able to look at possibly getting is only 30,000. So the one compactor's 40,000, 41,000. So next year, on a grant, it's a possibility that we might could put in for another compactor just for cardboard itself. We talked to one recycling facility, and we put forth the idea of co-mingling all of it, and they, they said that their facility would not handle that. Most facilities will not handle that, as to separate the cardboard, the plastic, the aluminum, you know, so on and so forth. So they, they was totally against that because their facility could not handle it. But as, as far as the recycling of the cardboard, I assure you that I am working very diligently in trying to alleviate that cost. And that is a temporary cost, specifically because the county was losing so much money in having to dispose of that cardboard that we had to do something.
Well, I, I appreciate what you're doing, I really do, and I see this as a county and a town problem. I also see it as a problem for my brother, because he's losing money. So I would entertain some kind of joint effort to get something, a comp, a smaller compactor that will do just cardboard, so that it can be recycled, taken out of the dump, but I would be willing to look at, I don't know how my other members feel, but look at some kind of shared cost on that compactor, and not doing it a year from now, but relatively soon, because from what I understand, you're going to spend a lot of money to upgrade that compactor that's there now, that's bailed.
Yeah.
And so why spend money on a machine that's 20, 30, 40 years old when you could might could get something that would be, be more efficient and more effective? And, you know, that's just what I'm saying.
Well, I think the other problem, and the bigger problem, is getting it to where it needs to go, right?
Yes, and, and, and I, again, I've talked to a recycling facility, and they would rent us a trailer, and the trailer would be sitting on our facility, and as soon as we bail a bale of cardboard, we put it in that trailer, and when the trailer's full, they come get it and haul it away. Therefore, then, we don't have to worry about a place to store it, we don't have it laying around, and we're not waiting on the economy, we're not waiting on the, the price to go up on the cardboard for recycling. It's that we get it in and we get rid of it.
So...
What kind of charge is that?
Well, that was $125, I think, for rent on the trailer, and they charge a $350 haul bill, which I am exploring other options.
Do they pay you for the recycled cardboard?
Um, no.
They're making money.
So we just give it to them, or you would just essentially give it to them and we pay them?
Yeah, yeah. So therefore, then, that, that's why I say I'm exploring different areas and different, I'm going to other places, and trying my best to find a suitable supplier or a suitable vendor for us to use. Maybe that's going to compensate us a little bit or knock a little bit off the bill for the cardboard itself. I know it's, I think at last it was $75 a ton for cardboard, so... So, you know, if, if I've got a bail that weighs five ton and I, I put forty bales in a trailer, that's quite a bit. Uh, so there ought to be a little bit of compensation on that part from a supplier or a hauler or a recycling facility in order to help us out just a little bit with that. Uh, we're, you know, we, we're just sort of, um, riding along in a bind and trying our best to get out of the squeeze.
I understand that.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate your problem.
David, if I may, you mentioned fifty-six dollars a ton to get rid of this right now. That does not include transportation, does it?
Yes.
That, that includes the transportation down there?
Yes.
Fifty-six dollars a ton?
Yes.
Okay.
But it does not include any state fees that are tacked on to that additional rate?
That's correct.
And I think that's an average of about eight dollars?
Eight dollars.
Somewhere in that range.
So we're really talking about sixty-four dollars a ton?
Yes, sir.
David, this new system we're discussing, the compactor, ain't there some savings and labor costs involved with that?
Absolutely. And that, that was why I opted to have a automatic, uh, compactor, um, priced so that we don't have to have someone there every minute to put the, put the items in and make sure that it's cleared out for the next person. It'll do it itself. And when it gets too close to being full, it will alert the, um, employees there. They can watch it then and once it gets to a certain pressure, they can take that container away and put another container in. So, yes, sir.
It's a whole lot, it's a whole lot safer method than, than, uh, some of these other compactors, the hydraulics.
Absolutely.
Right, they're dangerous.
Yes, sir.
The old machines are.
David, will that compactor allow for commercial dumping or is it town citizens wipe guns to the landfill and dispose as theirs individuals?
You know, it's, um, it's, it's a hopper and it's open top. Um, and it'll be at the end of the dock and there's a platform there. Um, so with that then, it's not, it's not necessarily going to be able to support a skid steer with a bucket on it or a garbage truck that able to back up to it. It'll, it would have to be if, if a garbage truck would come in, then it would have to dump it and we would have to do something with that then.
Anybody else have any questions for David on the cardboard and recycling? I just think it's very important that we get something going as quick as we can and I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate that a lot. We have a lot of citizens that are adamant about recycling. They've been trained and, uh, or I'd say at least sixty-five to seventy percent of the people right now are recycling. I would go that high. Uh, I could be wrong, but I, that's what I see. And, uh, so we need to get this up and going as quick as we can and as efficiently as we can. And I think that, uh, again, like John said, I think it could be looked at as a joint effort. I think the town would, would, would consider something in, in along those lines. It'd be worth discussion and, uh, we look forward to that discussion here when you get us more information and when you get that grant.
Yes, sir.
So.
Yes, sir, be glad to. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate it. Anybody else got anything you want to add in on that?
Thank you, Dave. The next agenda on our, um, item on our agenda, excuse me, is a collection of town taxes and associated fees. This comes after the county, um, um, well, you guys terminated the contract with the town. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Carter again so you can enlighten us on where you stand, where you're going with it. Let us know what, what we need to do.
Sure. I think everyone is aware by now of the, of the agreement that the town and county was in. And keep in mind that, um, I'm, I'm citing from history because I wasn't part of the initial process. But it's my understanding the original agreement was done in two thousand and eight, July one of two thousand and eight. And then it was amended in September of twenty seventeen. That's where I think the history unfolds. And the agreement itself includes, um, seventeen paragraphs that identify, uh, the, the various things the county will do and the town will do in, in cooperation. So in the process of getting through some of these items, there's a very short window in this agreement that allows for certain things. And it begins in paragraph fourteen of the agreement. And it says, "The agreement may be terminated by either of the parties upon written notice of the intention to terminate given to the other party at least six months before the expiration of the fiscal year in which the resolution directing such termination is adopted." When this came to light, it was November. So basically there was a one month window, according to this agreement, that notice had to be provided in order to follow the compliance of this. Now, I will tell you that, uh, there's been a team of us working on this. And that includes, uh, our tax office, our finance office, the manager's office. We've had some discussions with the board. There, there's been a group and some of this information is, is coming tonight. But of the seventeen paragraphs that were incorporated into the original and the amended agreement, I have twelve of them that I feel needs some attention. And, you know, when I say attention, it dates anything from as small as changing the dates all the way up to omitting one of those paragraphs. So, you know, there was a very fine window, a very small window that we had to do this. And instead of cut and pasting, which I think has happened in the past, I felt it best that we terminate the existing and create a new one. And that's what I recommended to the Board of Commissioners. And in, in return of that, uh, we provided the town notice. And in that notice, which is dated November the sixteenth, which is the same date that we actually acted as a Board of Commissioners in terminating, the end of this, it ended the paragraph says, "We look forward to exploring a mo- a more suitable arrangement that benefits both the county and town." So there was an upfront identification that it wasn't because we don't want to do it anymore. It was, it was identified that we wanted to identify a better relationship in an agreement so that both the town and county had that to work on. And the response back, uh, town manager, he, he too indicates that the, looks forward to the opportunities for collaboration in the future. And that was in an email dated November eighteenth. So to kind of fill in the blanks, uh, we got to that point and then the holidays were upon us. And the town manager and I had a, had a communication prior to those, those holidays. And we both had a lot of things going on and, and the indication was we would wait until after the holidays to pick this thing back up, which we have done. And once we get, you know, these, these suggested changes, and I'll pass those on to our attorney and our Board of Commissioners for their thoughts and processes, but I think we're well within the bounds. I think we're ready to put this thing together and move it forward.
The original contract was written by the county, correct?
Uh, it's on county letterhead, so I.
Is that right, Brian? I mean.
Well, it was John Adams and Mary Walker. But yeah, it was a county.
So, uh. It sounds to me as, uh, uh, certainly you've, that was my assumption when this whole thing came up though. It appears to me that you're handling it well and that we're, certainly we're all going to work together to renegotiate as per what you've already said. So it, it, it would seem to me that this is, uh, for lack of a better term, a, a moot point at this point, that we'll just wait for you to, uh, present us with new information and we'll work through it and get something that's, uh, good for both offices.
I disagree with that because this is what I need to know. Is the county still interested in collecting those taxes? If not, the town has to make preparations to do so. So we need to know ASAP before this, this contract ends, I believe in June. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We need to know something way before then because if not, we have to look into what we're going to do to collect those monies, whether it be hiring a new person, software, whatever. I don't know what is entailed in that, but that's something that we need to know as quickly as possible.
And I'm sure that Mr. Carter and Mr. Wilmeth are aware of that, are you not?
Absolutely. We, we followed the terms of the contract. We're entering the budget season. There's no better time to entertain these stuffs.
I just want to make that, that point abundant, that we need to know something soon because I don't like to be blindsided by something. And me personally, I felt blindsided by this because I, I was not contacted, I was not called, nothing mentioned about terminating a contract till after you're done and, and then I got the email. Give us a chance to negotiate before you terminate something. That's what I'm trying to say. I don't think it would take us a month to negotiate a contract like this. Um, and that's just my personal feel is that the town and county have always worked together in every situation that we can. And just, it's just like this, I'm not going to blindside you guys with nothing. The council's not going to blindside you. We just need to know where you're coming from. And from that meeting that night, it just sounded like bam, we're just cutting you off at the throat there. Now, I could be wrong and misinterpreting, but that's the way I feel, that's the way I feel and that's the way I stand. Now, if you and Ryan are already working the thing out, that's great. That's what managers are supposed to do and that's what I expect on our behalf of, of my manager to reach out and then get this thing done. And I'm sure you guys will work together in getting it done.
Michael, is there any kind of timeline that you're looking at as far as having this negotiation done?
I hope to have this agreement in place and to our attorney either, I will say by the middle of February. So when we get that done and the board considers it, we'll present it to you guys early March.
So we could be considering this at our March meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll hold you to it.
You're welcome to.
I think that would be certainly adequate from our point that you, I mean, as, as the contract said, you know, you had to make that, uh, statement in, in November and as long as you and Ryan are working on this, I, I feel very comfortable with what you're doing.
I don't think there's any question between Ryan and I. We've had conversations, we've had communication. I think we understand where, where we both are. I, I, I respect your thoughts, Mr. Mayor.
I just, yeah, I'm, again, I'm just saying, uh, I'd like to give, be given a heads up before the, the rug's pulled out from underneath me, so to speak. And that's the way I felt at the time and that's where the, the comments come from the other night in our town meeting because I was very dis- I felt very, uh, disrespected in that adamant after, especially after a meeting where we agreed to communicate more. You remember that, right?
I remember very much about that.
Where we all agreed to communicate more. So communication is the key and I think from this day forward, we, we know what we got to do, so let's do it, make it happen, make this thing a joint venture and get everything back on track the way it needs to be. And what's done is done, let it go and let's move forward. That's my feeling.
I would agree with that. Town manager talks to the county, uh, to the county manager. We have a chain of command. Town manager, you talk to your board, county manager talks to us. You two have got to work it out. We don't get involved until you have come to an agreement. If you don't get an agreement in February, that contract remains in effect. We can, we could extend that contract. We may be jumping the gun here. We don't, as a board, as a county commissioners, I don't think we have any, we don't have any input until the county manager comes to us with the finished product. You two have got to cuss and discuss before he comes to us and then we will cuss and discuss.
Mr. Ray?
Yeah, I just wanted to say on that note, I'm, I'm glad that we have met. Uh, we have neglected with COVID, we've been challenged to meet and communication is key. And I think, uh, tonight, you know, will be hopefully a, a start to, to recommitting, to, to meeting as, as joint boards and, and opening those lines of communication. Um, and I certainly, I can't speak for the rest here, but I certainly hope and I feel like that, you know, I want to, I would like to see the county be able to do that because citizens in the town are in the county as well. So it's in our, that's in all of its best interest and I certainly support the manager and the, both managers to, to work this out to something that's amenable to both sides.
You two guys are the eyes of the county and the town, no matter what, how it looks at. You two guys are the ones that have to work through the manure to get to the good smelling roads. That's what I'm going to say, you know what I'm saying? You've got to work through it. So let us come back with that and I think that's good. Uh, one other question before we get into comments from each, everybody is, uh, I've ge- I'm getting, personally, I'm getting asked a lot of questions at the, uh, the post office and phone calls about animal control. Who is the animal control officer and what is it? Who do we need to call whenever we have an animal control problem?
I'm, I'm guessing you're going to ask that under council comments because that's not an agenda item.
Oh, I'm just asking it.
We've got to stick to the agenda.
Okay, we'll stick to the agenda then. I'll ask it again in the council comments then. With that being said, I'll go to our county manager for his comments.
Uh, I've said, if anyone has any questions for me, I'm, I'm happy to answer them, but I think I don't have any further comments.
And we'll go to our town manager?
Uh, I want to thank both, uh, the Board of Commissioners and the, the council for, uh, meeting, uh, in this space. I want to thank, uh, D W Miles for providing, uh, the space free of charge, uh, for this meeting. I want to thank Charlie Scott and his team with ACTV for setting this up. So, uh, great venue, uh, I, I feel productive and I want to thank Michael for his, uh, his support. He and I do communicate, uh, regularly. We, uh, we have a, a good feel of each other, uh, good, bad or indifferent, but, um, I, I truly feel this is a good point to, to grow and, and go further, uh, together. So, uh, no further comments.
With that being said, I'll just start down the line and I'll in, I'll start with Commissioner Irwin if he has any comments he would like to bring.
Uh, one of the challenges that we are going to face both town and county as we enter the budget season is something that is, it's a burr under all our saddles and it's called unfunded mandates. Four years ago, we had an unfunded mandate. An unfunded mandate, for those that aren't aware, is whenever the state or the federal government says you will provide and they don't provide any money for it. We ended up with a secondary piece app. That is dispatch where you call in. We had to have a backup. We ended up borrowing about five hundred thousand dollars to establish that secondary piece app. County funded that. Well, we didn't fund it, we borrowed it. You're paying it back. We've got one more year and it'll be paid for. Lo and behold, in one more year, the state has decided that they will provide the backup. So all that money will go out the window. Next, they have put on, upon us E M, EMD, emergency medical dispatch. That's a requirement where if you call in and there's a medical emergency, that dispatcher can provide you information. It involved buying equipment again. We were fortunate. Fifty-six thousand dollars for the equipment. We ended up paying about two thousand for it since the state of North Carolina decided to, uh, give us the funds for that equipment. But what isn't being told is the manning. That's going to be about another two hundred thousand dollars in personnel costs that the county is going to have to absorb. These things are things that the county has to look at constantly. County manager, whenever he started the, uh, budget last year after he had come on board and he didn't know what he was getting into, but suddenly he found himself in the lion's den, had hair. You see the result?
On his face.
On his face. I forgot that. He, he always reminds me to say that. These are just some of the challenges that the, uh, county is coming. These are just some of the challenges that the county is coming, we're being challenged with. SROs, school resource officers, there's four. That's another $200,000 added on to us. We've had an earthquake. We've had a damdemic. I don't call it a pandemic, it's a damdemic. All these things, there's a cost to each and every one of them, and it's a challenge. And yeah, we get short-sighted, because we're looking at money. But it's a challenge that the town council has, they face it. The county commissioners have it, we face it. Town manager has got to submit that budget, as does the county manager. They've got to talk. We've got to work together. If we don't work together, we'll sink together in this county-town arrangement. I mean, we're not like Mecklenburg County, where we've got a Charlotte. We've got one county, Allegheny, fifth smallest in the state, one town in it. There is technically another town, it's called Roaring Gap, but they don't have police force. They're a town, so that they can have liquor. That's fine. But we've got to work together, and we can work together historically, we will. Yeah, there's going to be some rough feelings, there's going to be some hurt feelings, but at the end of it, we'll shake hands, and Allegheny County will walk down the road united with Sparta. Thank you.
Commissioner Lust.
I want to thank you, Mayor Brenniger, for your apology, and I certainly had no hard feelings at the meeting, so I just want to say that we're all Alleghenyans, and we're not the town council, we're not the county commissioners. We are here to serve all the same folks, and I think tonight has been a great start. And I just look forward to, you know, having great meetings like this, and being able to work together as a team, and showing a united front to our citizens. Thank you.
Once again, congratulations on your seat. Also, I'd like to congratulate Heather Klein becoming the new county attorney. I haven't said that in public yet, but congratulations on your new appointment, and I'm sure you'll do fine and do very, very well. They're very lucky to have you. Commissioner Evans?
I'll be brief, Mr. Mayor. I just want to sincerely thank the council for your help with the new courthouse, with the connections, water and sewer, that you voted on at one of your recent meetings. We sincerely thank you for that. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Bobby Irwin?
A couple of things. Just heard from the hospital about some of the security over there, and just like we discussed, they do not provide security. They rely on the town and the county. They're going to look in to see if they still have any money in that part of the budget. So I was glad to get that update. My main thing is about COVID, about the vaccine shots. Right now, there's probably over 2,000 people on the waiting list. It was 1992 this morning, and I'm sure there's been a lot of other people called to get on the waiting list to get the vaccine. The hospital has been working with our health department. They've given roughly 400 doses from the hospital to the county, so the county can administer them. They had, Ash County had a mass vaccination this past weekend, 500 people. Let's see, I guess it was Friday. Allegheny had one, where they vaccinated 200 people. It was supposed to be at the senior center, but it wound up being at the health department. And I was over there, and it was a big challenge for them, for the traffic to get in and out. I'm hoping that we'll be able to use the black building at the Higgins Center the next time. That'll make it a lot easier for people to be vaccinated. But you do have to be on the list, 65 and older. I think Allegheny is only going to get 200 doses this week. That's better than Ash County, they're not scheduled to get any doses this week. But at least we're going to get 200. That's as of today. The ship date, it may change between now and then. But the, I want to thank the people that volunteered last Friday. It takes roughly 30 minutes to administer a shot, do the paperwork, and watch a patient to be sure there's no reaction to the shot. So it's a lengthy process, and when you have 200 people, if it's one person per car, you've got 200 cars. Sometimes you can have two people in a car if they fit the criteria for the vaccination. So as slow as Raleigh is sending out the vaccine, it's going to take us a long time for everybody in the county to be vaccinated. The last report that I had, North Carolina was 42nd in rollout, 42nd in the bottom. There's only eight states, seven other states worse than we are. So hopefully, Raleigh can figure out a way to get these vaccines out. And that's all I have.
Sounds like the vaccines are like the packages at the post office at Christmas. Slow. I'm going to skip Commissioner Bill Osborn, he'll be going before I go on final comments, so I'm going to go to Mayor Pro Tem Mike Polir.
Yes, I'm hoping we can, as a group, that we can get some of these challenges straightened out here first of the year, about the cardboard and the town tax collection. I think that one stop tax collection is essential. That really works out good for everybody, I believe. Glad everybody can make it here tonight, and appreciate everybody and what they do.
Commissioner, or Councilman John Brady?
Well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Carter and Ryan for setting this meeting up, because I think it's important that we talk, and that, as Wes said, communication is the key. I think we've gone over some really important topics tonight, and I think there's been some worthwhile information shared. So I do appreciate that. I look forward to the next one, and I want the commissioners to know that in the meantime, we're there, and we're willing to listen to whatever you have, and if we're all in this together, so if we can help, we would be glad to. That's all.
Thank you, John. Councilman Terry McGrady?
I haven't got anything at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Millie Richardson?
Just to reiterate, certainly thank everybody for turning out, and not to boast at all. I've been humbled and honored to serve on both of the boards, total 13 years, because I'm older than dirt, but during that period of time, our strength has always been that we work together. And that didn't mean that we didn't have to have discussions, and there weren't difference of opinions, and there were certainly different goals at certain period of time. But when we filed a run for any of these offices, then we have committed ourselves to civilly and responsibly do the business of the community, and that's what we're doing, and I feel quite confident that that's what we're going to do going forward, because we are all in this together. And I do appreciate everybody coming out, and certainly do appreciate our managers. You all are doing an excellent job, and that's all I have to say.
Councilman Cole Edwards?
So I'll just echo, I guess, for the 10th time now. This is good, glad we're together. We need to break bread more often, I think. As a councilman, I think this is only the second time that I've done this, and I've been in it just over a year now. I could be wrong about that, but I think this is just the second meeting. Sparta's not Sparta without Allegheny, and Allegheny's not Allegheny without Sparta, so we need to do this more often. Secondly, I think it's important to remind the public that I am in a unique position as a county employee. When I sit in this chair, I sit here as a councilman. I do not represent the county in any of my statements, I represent the town. And after the paper last week, words looked different on paper than they do when they're said. I could see how my comments were perceived as negative. Anybody who knows me knows that that's not the case, and that was not my intent. My intent was that we need to work together, just as we've all reiterated here tonight. I'm a dedicated county employee, not disgruntled in any way. I'm a dedicated town councilman. I do this 24 hours a day. I signed up for it, and honestly, I love every minute of it. I can't go to the food line and get a Mountain Dew without getting stopped, and I'm in there for an hour. But again, I wouldn't have it any other way, but just remember, when I'm in this seat, I'm a councilman, not a county employee. But thanks again, and hopefully we can do this more often than a month with five days. I'd rather see us do it, you know, every three months or so. But thank you all.
Chairman of the county commissioners, Bill Osborn?
It's hard to keep up with you guys, everything's done been covered, I believe. It's been a good meeting, and lots been accomplished tonight in a good manner, and that's the way to go about it. We've covered a lot of roads, made a lot of good conversations, and the tax thing has been a touchy subject, and I'm sure the two managers will put this together. All the county was after was to get enough money just to pay for the actual cost of doing this. There was no profit to be made. I just want to make that a clear statement behind that, and that's what we're trying to accomplish. Been a good meet, looking forward to having the joint meetings on a regular basis, and we're all in this game together, so it's a must. They all pull together and work together. And in closing, there's an old saying I'll share, that there's a reason why the windshield is a lot bigger than the rearview mirror. We keep looking forward and going forward. Thank you.
As mayor of the town of Sparta, it's with great pleasure that I say this. Thank each and every one of you for coming out, because in adverse situations, we've not been able to do this now for almost six months. It's been that long. We have hashed out a few things, we've got some things going in the right direction, and that's the direction that we need to keep going. I'm not going to agree with you on a lot of things, and y'all are not going to agree with every single thing that I do. That's what makes us unique and different, but it brings everybody's opinions to the table. Sometimes we wear our emotions on our sleeve. There's three Marines that are sitting on this table right now, and I can tell you right now, we wear our emotions on our sleeves 99% of the time. And that's just the way it is. So if I have said anything, if I have offended anyone in any manner, I am asking for your sincere forgiveness. I apologize. Do not mean or intend to hurt anyone's feelings or go after anybody. I'm not here to do that. I am, however, an elected official, and the people expect all of us elected officials to do our due diligence and stand up for those that can't talk. And each and every one of us has our own way of doing those things. So let's continue doing that, let's continue coming together, let's continue putting issues out here on the table, so we can do what's best not only for our town, but for our county. Now, I did ask a question a minute ago about the animal control, and if you want to tell me that afterwards, so I can post it on my page, I'll be happy to do that. Or if someone wants to explain that, they can tell me. It's just a common thing that I am asked in the post office, who do I call? So if that's okay. Mr. Carter?
I'll answer that. I was only following procedure, Mr. Mayor.
No problem, not a problem. I was probably out of line, so.
So here in the county, that responsibility, first of all, falls on, I look at David Spicer back there in the back room. County maintenance staff is the, what I would call the boots on the ground in most instances. Now, I will tell you that in addition, there are a lot of things, and everybody has either heard, read, or seen it. This animal control ordinance that's in existence, it's older than the agreement we just talked about. And I'll go as far as to say, there's some people in this room that weren't born when that agreement was put together. So we have a work session actually later this week to talk about a few things, but one of the items on that is the ordinance itself, because just like some of the other things that we're getting to and addressing, that ordinance itself needs revised and some understanding and better direction.
What number do they need to call? Do they need to call dispatch to go ahead and call who's on call that day or whatever, or is it just go ahead and call you at maintenance?
David Watt, would you recommend?
In the evening time, in the evening time especially, call dispatch, and then they'll go home with me, and I will make sure that someone is set to take care of what needs to be taken care of. Here today, they called the transfer facility. So that's another thing that we'll look at, is having a set number to call, and if you call the transfer facility, it's after hours, they'll be right there. So that's why I recommend being after 5:00, call dispatch.
So after 5:00, I want to say this to the citizens of our county, to call 336-372-4455, not 911. Call that number right there, and they'll get you an animal control officer after 5:00. Until then, call the transfer facility at the county, and they'll try to find you somebody to help you out right there. So thank you for that. I think it's been a great meeting, guys. Has anybody else got anything that they'd like to say before we go out? Bill, if you want to dismiss your...
Motion to adjourn, county commissioners.
Your motion, your second. Motion to second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, it's been a good meeting, thank everybody.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn and a second, all in favor. Four hugs, since one left early.